Great, good evening and welcome to the annual distribution of the budget for the operating system. I'd like to call the meetings from order. In a second, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Adam McEntire to go over the budget and go over some of the great things that we did this year. Before I do that, I'd just like to thank our staff for all the hard work that they've done this year to keep our heads learning and do all the great things that Mr. Sikes can go over. So with that, turn it over then.
Hey, each year I have a pleasure of speaking, sharing some highlights from our annual report. Want to give a big thanks to Brenda Harris. You may have received this document in your mailbox recently. Brenda spends all year collecting the information on the highlights from throughout the school district to share, but I'd like to highlight a few items from this report. There with me for one second. Okay, first off, for those of our school district, we're out of 3,710 students. We have one traditional high school, one traditional middle school, three elementary schools, and then we have two charter schools. The Grand College Academy services students nine and twelve, has approximately 200 students. And then the Options Virtual Charter School services students in four-year-old kindergarten through 12th grade, and enrollment is just over 300 students. This past year, I want to take a moment to recognize we have 12 staff members that are retired. Their experience ranged from 16 years of experience to 32 years of experience. Want to thank all of them for their tremendous years of experience for the school district and great things they did for our students and for our families. Sadly, we lost Barb Fisher this past year. She died in an automobile accident during the holiday season. Barb was a longtime serving school board member, a member of the community, and served on various boards and organizations. Want to thank her and her family for all of her tremendous years of service. She served a total of 16 years. There was a misprint in the hard copy portion of this that said that Barb had served as president of the school board. She never did serve as president, but was serving as vice president at the time of death. The bulk of the highlights are our school board members. We have two school board members who chose not to run again this past year. That was Mr. Hartel and Jimmy Ray. We want to thank them for their years of service. And then we welcome three new board members to our board. Mr. Devin Gattin, Mrs. Heather Reckley, and Mr. Adam McEntire this past year. As you can go through, the book gets organized in areas of tradition, and it highlights a number of different activities that are traditional and that we do typically on a regular, ongoing basis. One of my favorite activities, I've encouraged you to attend if you haven't done so yet, is our annual chili cook-off where all proceeds go to our education for autism programs. It's a wonderful event, as well as many of the others that we have to run. We also recognize the 1997 Nerds Basketball Championship team this past year. This year in our early childhood, we started a new program. This is in our innovation system called the Junior and Elder's Peer Model Playgroup that brought in more students to also be a part of group with our students with disabilities and special needs and participate together in learning and development. The Elderly and Athletes was a new program this year as well that Esther White so put together, and that took place all throughout the school district on a number of different occasions. It's done a lot of work and coordination and was a great success. I want to thank all of those people that were involved in that. In the Elderly and School District, we have a big focus on college, career, and career readiness. The center section speaks to a lot of those different activities such as biz scout, mock interviews, elk works, senior presentation. And then we also have the Avid Showcase, and we're proud of the fact that this year we teach the second district in the country to have both our middle school and high school recognized as demonstration schools within AVID. AVID stands for Advancement via Educational Promotionation. It's a comprehensive program available for all of our students in their 12th grade. The Elderly Strong is our community engagement coordinator, does a lot of work working with outside community agencies and groups, and helping develop that community pride and access to our buildings and facilities. I really want to give a big thanks to our American region most 45 color guard who attend our home football games, soccer games, volleyball games. They make basketball games. They come to a lot of our events, and a lot of our visitors really give a lot of help moments to the presentations of colors that we do at all the events that they attend. And it's great to see them there and have them participate in that demonstration and patriotism around the community. Our students really go above and beyond in giving back to the community. They have a large service state called the Great Give Back where they go out and help different agencies and organizations all throughout the community. We have things such as the hot water tanks, take care of each other's, where they're giving food and food distribution, and helpers, and being kind. We can read about those opportunities there, but our students are always finding new ways to give, come back to those in need in the community or just other community agencies that are looking to help. In 2023, we had a tremendous faculty special, Mrs. Kelly Nimmerman and Mrs. Maggie Green were recognized with coal, won the leadership award for the principalship and the other area of teaching recognition award as a teacher fellowship award, recognizing our excellence and loyalty for students. We also have the Wisconsin Postart Educator of the Year, which is a huge accomplishment. Just one to say to Wisconsin to say that. And then at honor tonight, over a quarter million dollars was given back to our ex-school graduates in the form of scholarships for higher education. In regards to athletics, you can read in that what would yourself a number of the accomplishments, but I really do want to highlight a couple of individuals. Parker Christensen won the state championship in tennis as a sophomore this past year. Jessica Haggerty won the state championship in her division for powerlifting. She also went on to nationals and won the national championship in powerlifting. And I believe I set at least one national record in her weight class for powerlifting. It's quite an accomplishment for her. I want to congratulate her. And then in our esports, if you're not familiar with esports, that's electronic sports. We have nearly 100 students that participate on our esports team. We had a state champion named called Slim. Trenton Hodges had a nice winner, Jalen Alencios, Riley Delati, Martin, and Dan Carney, they outwon the state championship. Congratulations to those students. To go on as well, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that this past year, Tivoli's Elementary School was also recognized as a national ribbon school. Only seven schools in the state of Wisconsin would seek that honor, and it goes to the highest succeeding school districts in the state. So it's quite an accomplishment. I'm going to name our first ribbon school that we have recognized in the school district. I want to give a big congratulations to all those staff out at Tibbetts for their excellent hard work. And then throughout the district, our programs were, again, all of our schools were recognized by the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction from the RTI Center related to providing multiple systems of supports for our students. What that means is that we have programs and processes in place that help all of our students achieve at a high level and a design systematic approach to help those students who are struggling. Now, we'll get into the financial picture and the budget overview, but on the last page, we do have a chart which demonstrates our average total cost per pupil. This includes all state funds, federal funds, divided by the total number of students. We're able to provide, and we're very proud of the fact, we provide very high achievement, very high programming for our students in the state despite being one of the 10 lowest cost per pupil school districts in the state. I'll turn the time over to Mr. Schilling.
Thank you, Mr. DeAlada. It's part of tonight's budget presentation. I'm going to review some basic facts about the Elderly Area School District. We'll take a look at some comparables in a number of categories, how we compare to some of the area schools, to some schools that have similar demographics in Elderly Area School District. And finally, the 2324 budget highlights and proposed tax levy. This first line chart shows the enrollment change for our school district over the last third of two years, so back to 1990, and then through this past fall. As we can see, although not every year showed an increase, certainly the trend was increasing in enrollment almost every year in our district. These numbers represent what's called our head count. So it includes resident students that are attending our school in this district along with open enrollment students who are non-resident that are attending our school system. So the open enrollment number, as you can see here, this chart going back to 2007 has been increasing pretty substantially over that time period. And the open enrollment for our school district represents the net of almost 600 students. So we have about 750 students come to our school district from outside our residency, and we have about 150 that leave our school in this district. And the part of the funding for the open enrollment program, there's dollars that are associated with the students. Last year was about $8,200 for regular education, about $13,000 for special education. If you take a closer look in terms of our enrollment, this chart shows how our resident enrollment compares to our overall enrollment and then the open enrollment as well, and the combination of those. And our resident enrollment actually is maintained about the same, but actually gone down over the last two years. However, our open enrollment students increased, so the head count for our school district has increased over that time period. So how do we use the monies that we get from the state, federal, and local level? And what are those sources? So this pie chart gives you kind of a sense of the dollar makeup of where those dollars come from. The two largest portions, this is the annual tax levy, about 36%, and then what we call state equalization aid. And the combination of those two are just under 75%. They make up what's called our revenue cap. You may have heard that before. And that's controlled by a state formula that controls about 75% of our funding. We receive another 10% through other state aids, they're called categorical aids, for student aid, it's $742. There is an aid that we receive for transportation, there's a bilingual cultural, and there's a library aid. About 13% of our overall revenue is from the open enrollment program, and then about 4% is from federal sources. The hardware humanities monies. The major portion is really our personnel costs. So if you look at the salary and wages for all of our staff, and then if you look at the benefits, the combination of that is about 75% with 53% being salary wages, about 12% would be what's just for health insurance, and then another 11% would be the other benefits for our employees. 7% is for supplies and equipment for operating the school each year, everything from computers, the paper, the work hooks. 5% is for our public school transportation services, another 5% is for utilities and maintaining our facilities. And then open enrollment out for those students that do leave our district, there's an expense, and that's about 3%. And then 4% is for other purchase services. Major component here would be tuition expenses for students that were receiving maybe special aid or other services outside the school district. This next chart shows the annual dollar amounts of our long-term debt, and we have three different debt issues that are outstanding. The state allows us to, I'll call it mortgage or bond debt for up to 20 years, most of the credit we haven't done for that length of time, but that is allowable. The first debt issue here is the rent is for the 2015 referendum, which mainly caused all additions to three elementary schools and our high school, including the gyms for Tibbetts and Webside. We also did some renovation in a number of our buildings at that time. The 2016 referendum, which includes purchase of the land from the middle school and high school, the development of the fields, it also included the agility center, the weight room, the renovation of this room here, and also the greenhouse here in the high school. And then the most recent is 2020, and that's the purchase of St. Pat's School and compared that to our options program. So if you look at our debt issue, originally with the 2015 referendum, we bonded that for about 12 years, and we have eight years remaining in that debt. The 16 referendum, we bonded for 17 years, and we have less than that in terms of outstanding, about 12 years in terms of that debt. And then the 2020, we bonded that for 10 years, and we have six years left on that debt. And the reason we bonded for less than the allowable amount is we received such favorable interest rates that made sense to shorten the length of that and save our taxpayers on interest payments. The total outstanding debt we have is about $37 million, and the amount of debt for allowing that now is not to exceed 10% of our property values as a school district. Ocurring outstanding debt is about 1.2%. Equalized property value. This represents the fair market value of all property within our school district. It's determined, each item told by the Wisconsin Department of Revenue. This is important for three reasons. First of all, it's used in the calculation of the distribution of our annual tax levy across our eight municipalities. I don't know if there was enough of these books at the table, but I think if you turn to page 24, you'll see kind of a calculation of what that looks like in the distribution. The numbers also use the calculation of our tax rate of mill rate, and it's also used in the calculation of our state aids. The higher property value on a per student basis, the less state support or state dollars we give as a school district, and that's just a bit of a cardinal structure. This next chart shows the change in our tax rate over time, goes back to 1993, and that had a significant change in school funding. State began to pick up a larger share, share of school funding, there was revenue campaign to begin to play, and you can see how that mill rate changed. We're estimating our mill rate will remain about the same for 2023. This next chart shows the change on a yearly basis, either a percent increase or decrease in our annual tax levy. You can see how that's changed since 2012. The largest increase we had was this last year, and part of the reason for that was the loss of state aid because our property values increased significantly, and our student population in terms of residents went down slightly. But if you look over the past 12 years, the annual increase has been about 1.56%. So let's take a look at some comparables. Area school districts, A-12, and some other school districts based on enrollment and other factors. So there's 10 school districts here, this is just looking at the enrollment. The largest one here, the Forest, smallest one, East Troy. Ashwabada Schools, you may know was actually Park or adjacent to Green Bay. The Forest is just north of Madison, and then Adalas is just running across. Free reduced lunch eligibility gives you kind of a range in how much changes between school districts, with the highest being yellow, then the lowest being the Forest. First food expenditure, Mr. Ted and I talked about that earlier, and testing how we compare to area school districts. We included Ashwabada as well, and I think we're number two based on these school districts in this population. And all the data that I've been sharing with you either comes from our annual report of the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction, or the Wisconsin Policy Forum, and you speak for all the Wisconsin Tax Area Association. Equalized value per student. I mentioned earlier that the higher the value, the less we get in terms of state aid, so if you compare a couple of districts here, say East Troy, compare that to Milton, you'd see there's a significant difference in the property values per student. East Troy would be much higher than Milton. And then when you see how the ages are distributed, you can see East Troy is much lower, 29%, and Milton's at 53%. And this shows the 2022 tax rate for these area school districts. So if you look at Elderly, we're probably close to being in the middle, we're not the lowest, we're not the highest, and this is the tax cost for 1,000 of equalized value. Fund balance is a percent of expenditures. Fund balance is used to meet the capital needs of the school district, and for our school district, we try to maintain a level so that we don't need to or minimize the need for short-term borrowing to be payable and other expenses. And usually, picture me at around like 30%, 28%, 30% is what's necessary for that. You can see that it varies between school districts, some being much higher and some being lower, and that really is a local decision. So looking at a couple of highlights, you may have heard the state recently adopted the 202325 state budget. So what was in that? Part of that was increases in our revenue cap. $325 increase this coming year and also next year. That's the first increase we've had from the last budget where we had zero increase in terms of the per pupil amount for revenue cap calculation. The per pupil remained at the current level, so there was no increase there. Special education had a little bit of an increase, about 3%. They put in what they call a certain amount in the state budget, which means based on actual cost, the amount could be either a little higher or a little lower, and that 33% depending on expenses for all school districts. There's additional state equalization aid that was built into the state formula, and we also are going to receive some additional mental health dollars. These used to be more of a competitive grant, but they converted that to per pupil amount. I think we're going to receive $33 per student this coming year, and then next year it's a $12 per student. Going back in terms of looking at some of the federal dollars that came into our district and all school districts across the state, those are called the COVID dollars or ESSER funds. And our district received about $4.49 million through a series of these ESSER funding mechanisms. The first chunk of that, about $750,000, was used for addressing our face-to-face instruction and mitigating the COVID impact during the 2020, 21 school year, also 2021, 22. The remaining fund, because the state budget didn't allow for any increase in revenue cap, built the gap basically in terms of funding our staffing needs for those school years. It's anticipated that all of these funds are just due to stop by the end of the 2324 school year. This chart kind of shows you how those dollars are, the amount we receive, how we use them. ESSER 1 and ESSER 2 was approved by Congress during the Trump administration, and ESSER 3 approved by Congress during the Biden administration. And all those funds need to be spent by September of 24. Highlights, some budget reduction, some saving, additional revenue items. Again, we're using the remaining ESSER funds to go for a million dollars in ESSER 3 funds to offset existing position costs. We are reducing a part-time position, our position we had at the high school. We had a small COVID lecture that we used during the time of COVID, we don't do that anymore, so we'll reduce that. And then we're holding on inflationary increase to the number of areas of our budget. Typically, inflation increase would probably be around 2.5% for many purchase services, supplies, non-capital capital items, so those are being held at current level in the only areas that would increase student transportation and utilities. So the cost savings are offset of just under $300,000. We are looking at a few additional staffing. First one would be at the elementary level, looking at special ed teacher. At old school, we're looking at the EL teacher, we're doing what's called a transfer service. That allows us to fund those positions above our revenue cap because of the needs of those students that are moving into our school district. Some other staffing we're looking at was the increased demand in the tech area, we're looking at a part-time position on the full-time. We're also looking for additional teacher and special ed coach for our college and career academy, and programs get growing significantly, we're just addressing that need with the staffing. We had a grant that expired last year, the two-year grant, it's part of the school site position, so with that expiring, we'll have to absorb those costs. We are looking at a new sport program this year, the cross. Some of the funding here is going to be one-time funding to get the program up and running, and then the continued cost will be less in this impact. And then at 180, we're expanding some opportunities for kids for our cheer club and our elementary middle school, and then also a parent connection to within for our students, younger students, younger families, three-year-olds, four-year-olds, and some additional funding to meet those needs. Overall budget adjustments or highlights, wages and salaries. For our professional support staff, we're looking at a 1.4 and a 1.5% increase in those two groups that basically allow us for what's called a step increase in the salary schedules. For our administrators and supervisors, at this time, we're holding the same salary figures for those groups of employees. Transportation, makes our contract for term transportation carrier, that's a 3% adjustment. Utilities and health insurance, we're assuming about a 5% increase in those costs. And then we're going to see some additional state equalization aid as well. So the impact in terms of our operating budget is about a 2.77% increase with those of some expense adjustments. So as we talked about earlier, we're looking at student enrollment, class of about 3,700 students this year, and 455 whole and part-time employees. The proposed tax levy for 2324 is $22,428,68. It represents a 2.9% increase in the levy. When you factor in the impact of that in relation to property values, we're assuming the property value increase about 3%. The change that we'll get in October reflects the change from January of '22 to January of '23. So if they were somewhat concerned in that estimate, based on that estimate, and based on the proposed tax levy, the tax rate would remain basically about the same for this coming school year. And that concludes the budget presentation. Any questions?
Well, compared then to the budget hearing, we'll open the annual meeting of the school district. Before we get started, I've had, I just need to verify that everyone is a elector of the Elderly School District. When I mean by that is matter of different side within the Elderly School District, and you must have lived in records on date days. And that's just to vote on the items that we go over in this district. So if you are not a resident of the Elderly School District, then please raise your hand from the side of the home. Okay, so we have a few. So when we do send the voting, then just abstain from the voting. And so next, we would need to elect a chair, and I would look for a nomination for that, if you get one.
I nominate Susan Lysley.
Okay, we have a nomination to Susan Lysley. Do you have a second for that? One second. Okay, we have a motion, a second for Susan Lysley as the chairperson. Did we have anyone, any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Very young, and I guess I'll, the most, the
Very none, then I guess I'll disclose the nomination and cast majority vote for Susan Lysley as the chair. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? Okay, what's your chair? Nice to hear. Thank you very much, Susan.
Thank you. It's really nice to see this many people here. There were many times when I was president of the school board when we had maybe 10. So I know it's probably not, some of you here for different reasons, but it's still nice to see. Next on our agenda for the annual meeting is the school board treasures report. Mr. Baker.
I thank Mrs. Lysley, and the chairman for talking about next year's budget. I'm listening to you talk about last year's budget, the treasures report for the year ending in June 30th of 2023. And we have your deck here that's been provided. If we found on pages 13 through 19, starting with the general fund, it's a distributive of all the different portions of funds. And then this is revenue and expenditures for each. And if you have any questions regarding that, we can talk to Mr. Chuen or Mr. Chuen.
Any questions about Mr. Baker's report? Looking for a motion to approve this report, please. So, and a second?
Second.
If it's been moved and seconded, we approve the treasures report. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Okay, the next, we have the resolutions, and we have three resolutions this year, and they were found on year page 80. And the first one, suggested salary and reimbursement for the school board numbers. I believe there is no change in these exact criteria. And just for the record, there hasn't been in a long time. So looking for a motion to approve resolution, suggested resolution A.
Oh, move.
It's been moved. Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded to... I'm sorry. I need a name for the miss. Do you have a last name, Carl?
For those who said...
Thank you. Carl Russellson made the motion, and the second was?
You know what? Mike's way.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution A, the salary and reimbursement of the school board for the assuming year. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Next, we have my motion B. This is the levy for school tax. It's kind of important that we read it per verb data on page 80. So...
There are no more taxes. A lot of us don't have this rule.
Okay.
Is there any way to put into the legislation?
I think there is. I bet there is. But it won't be...
The booklet that I'm referring to is actually on our website. I'm going to go to our website, under school board, annual meeting. That's the annual meeting for it. Now, pull that page. Chuen, can you read that?
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, again, whoever is making this motion, I need you to pretty much read for a... Please state your name and read it for me. Looking for a motion.
I would like to levy a school tax against all tax school property within the Elkhorn area school district in the sum of not more than $16,1289. The general fund, $682,808, the community service fund, $5,744,699 for the debt service fund, for my combined total of $22,428,68 to operate and maintain the school system and finance the debt service system on the basis of the constitutional legal or to school district budget presented earlier.
And you named it?
Right away.
Wait. Is there a second?
I'll say.
Jenny? It's been moved and seconded to approve the levy of school tax of assets against all tactical property within the Elkhorn area school district in the sum of not more than $16,1289 for the general fund, $682,808 for the community service fund, and $5,744,699 for the debt service fund for a combined total of $22,428,68 to operate and maintain the school system and to finance the debt service of said system on the basis of the 202324 school district budget presented earlier in the meeting. Any questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. And our last question this evening is for the annual time and date for 2024. Looking through that house.
Oh, move.
Mr. Johnson? A second?
Second.
Give me a name. Sheri Low. Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to establish the annual meeting from the Elkhorn area school district for the July 22nd, 2024, to begin at 6:00 PM. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Or two passes. Thank you. Any other business that anyone would like to bring before the annual meeting? Seeing none, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
So move. Second.
John Mander. And moved and seconded to adjourn the annual meeting. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.